Well, welcome everyone to the Public Safety Veterans Subcommittee. I'm Councilman Mike Milikowski and my colleagues are here. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have a couple cards from the Call to the Public. Patrick, you're...
Good morning. My name is Patrick Kelly. I co-chair the LGBT Advisory Board Committee. Been on that board for the past 10 years now. The reason I'm here are two issues. One, I've been... We have not received a UCR biased crime report since the third quarter of 2015. Over a year now. Basically, what that report is, it breaks down locations and minority groups that have been a victim of a hate crime. I have copies of the last report that I can give to council or the committee if you would like. We... Our advisory board used that information to see if there's a pattern or if there's a specific location in the valley that they may live, that there might have been an increase of hate crimes that either they've been a victim of. And then the other issue, which is really hard for our board to give up, is we've been asked numerous times by our liaison with the Community Response Squad or the Sergeant of Community Response Squad, even the Lieutenant of the Community Response Squad, a list of our members. Now, you may or may not be aware of this, but LGBT people are not a protective class. As an African American, you cannot be discriminated. We know that. Other minority groups cannot be... are protected, LGBT or not. As a gay person, I could be fired from my job for being out. I could be targeted by a hate group. The reason we will not give up this information to the department is because as an individual, you can request public information. You can ask for the list of those members. And technically, the department has to give them to them. Now, we... With the recent election and the increase of hate crime across the country, we're... we just won't give that information up.
No, go ahead.
So, again, that's the two reasons that I'm here. One, that we're not giving information regarding hate crimes in the valley that not only our community, but the African American Hispanics. And I will just say, back in 2015, third quarter, there were 14 crimes against African American communities, which is one of the smallest population in the valley. LGBT was number two. The majority of the crimes happened in the precinct 700, which is Mountain View, which is the majority of where the LGBT community businesses and bars and majority of the LGBT populations live. Again, if you'd like copies of the 2015, I'll be more than happy to give those to you.
Well, thank you, Patrick. And we'll make sure that somebody from the police department will contact you and work with those issues. We have Bill.
My name is Bill Gemmell, and I'm also a member of the advisory board with Patrick. I'm also the associate publisher of Echo Magazine, which is LGBT magazine for Arizona. I'm just following up. We had sent an email to our representative on some things because LGBT community is on edge based on things going on in Washington. We have reports from the Huffington Post saying the New York Police Department says that hate crimes have spiked 115% there since Election Day and that it has a particular impact on Jewish LGBTQ and Muslim communities. We know yesterday, as you looked at ABC... I'm sorry, at Channel 3, an anti-LGBT man verbally attacked a Tempe church employee. And so, we really need these statistics to monitor what is going on in our community. And the fact that we don't have them with what's going on in Washington and all the heightened sense of what's going on here is very important to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Summers, come on.
Good morning. Excuse me. I'm Jenny Ann. I'll try this again. I'm Jenny Ann Sumner, co-chair of the Citizens Law Enforcement Anti-Graffiti Initiative. And first, I want to thank the committee, Chief Williams and Ms. Perelli, because the last time I was here, I talked about the problem we were having with the graffiti hotline and getting it answered. And we're working on solutions, and I appreciate that. And we're going to meet next week. So, my appreciation to all of you. And also, the Phoenix Community Alliance appreciates your help because they're the ones that's funding the graffiti hotline. Publicly, I want to say that I'm sorry Chief Williams had to start the position with such a difficult staffing challenge, but I do appreciate her willingness to consider the impact of her decisions on neighborhoods. And finally, as I stated last month, it's never too early to start talking about the budget, especially this year. We really need to find a way to fund our police staffing to acceptable and safe levels for both citizens and police and a budget for unexpected events such as protests or celebrations downtown. Thank you.
Now, thank you. And Ms. Summers, Bill, and Patrick, thank you for coming out. I mean, during Community Call to the Public is a way for us as committee members to actually hear some concerns that are out there, and we'll try to address that. Thank you. With that, we're on item number one, which is approval of the minutes.
Move approval?
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. We're on item number two, which is a consent item.
Move approval? Second.
All righty. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes also. And we have an update on the serial street shooter. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and public safety members. I'm Mary Robertson. I'm Assistant Chief over the Investigations Division. And I believe we have PowerPoint here. And I just wanted to update you on a serial street shooter investigation that we're investigating. And we have identified that this is linked to the same suspect or suspects. And there's nine different incidents that occurred over a four-month period where 11 persons were injured or killed as a result of a shooting. We linked these cases. We immediately created a task force. A task force was created with all of our partnerships and because we know the city of Phoenix, he may go beyond boundaries. So, we have to elicit information from our state and federal partnerships. So, we have DPS, Federal Bureau of Investigations, ATF. Everybody that's involved with this task force is dedicated to solving this crime, arresting this offender. And I just wanted to assure you that everything is in motion and in place. It is still an active investigation. We are still soliciting tips and leads. We're up to date about 3,500 tips and leads that we have followed up on, and we're still asking the community support. Silent Witness and all the partnerships affiliated with them have offered a $75,000 reward to help in solving this case, and we will not stop. We will keep this task force up and active until it is solved and he is arrested. And again, we're still asking for the community's assistance on any tips and leads that may help us to solve this case.
Is there any questions or comments?
I want to thank you for staying diligent. And the last slide shows the flyer in both Spanish and English at our last event in District 8 on this particular topic. The majority of the people who attended were speaking Spanish, so really appreciate reaching out in both languages because the concern is in a very diverse community.
Great job.
And I believe it's the outreach and working with the community that this individual or individuals are off the street because it's really a team effort. And thank you for going out there and organizing the community and really working hand in hand. So, keep up the great work. Next item is a new program, a new pilot program in Maryville. It's the Arizona Angel Initiative. And we have our commander and chief.
Good morning, Chair and members. My name is Sean Collin. I'm the precinct commander of the Maryville Australian Mountain Precinct. And we're really excited about this program. And I just want to make sure that as we move forward, this is working. So, the Arizona Angel Initiative was brought to us by the Governor's Office for Youth, Faith, and Family. And Debbie Moke heads up that office within the Governor's Office. What it does is it allows the police department to bridge that gap between addiction and those addicted to opiates and the police department and law enforcement. It establishes relationships with a national initiative that falls under the guise of much of what's in the 21st Century Policing Report, a group called PRI, which is the Police Assisted Addiction Recovery Initiative. And that's the trend nationally for law enforcement to start looking at addiction in a different way instead of just handcuffing it. There's 100 law enforcement agencies around the country that are involved in this initiative. And so, at the gist of what it does is, in Maryville, for example, and around the country, we're seeing a tremendous increase in opiate-related overdoses. So, we hope to impact that. Many of our crimes in our communities, especially some of our lower-level property crimes and thefts and assaults, have at their nexus drug addiction. We hope to impact that. In the Maryville community particularly, we've been identified as having the highest rate of child removal with the number-one nexus being addiction in the home. So, we also know that when children are removed from their homes, we start a pipeline to jail. And so, it's actually a really proactive way to get ahead of crime in our communities. It helps families stay together, and that's a common goal that we should all have. It also reduces stigma. It reduces stigma in the minds of a law enforcement officer who's constantly dealing with addicts and starts to humanize that interaction. Another thing that's really important to us is it treats disease the way it should be treated. We talk about, imagine if somebody called 911 and said, "Come to my doorstep. I have cancer. Arrest me and take me to jail to cure that." So, it's us looking at addiction in a different way in law enforcement. And it's a tremendous way to establish collaboration, both public and private collaboration. There's a whole host of entities involved in this initiative as we move forward. So, here's how it works. Monday through Friday business hours, as a result of me having staff at the building, someone who has made that choice in their life to get healthy can walk into our precinct lobby and present themselves as a candidate for Angel. We then have a staff that summons a police officer to the lobby, and then we make sure that this individual meets some criteria. They have to be 18 years or older unless they have a parent or guardian. And we did have a youth come in on one where there was a parent guardian. And then we go through identification process. We also want to make sure that that individual isn't associated with a crime and there isn't victimization that still needs to be adjudicated. So, we run them through a whole host of backgrounds to make sure they're clear. Once they are blessed through our criteria that you see up there related to drug sales, obviously, you can't be running from the cartel and run to our station and ask for help that way. So, we make sure that's done. We make sure they have valid city ID, state or federal. And then, once that has been determined, then we make a simple phone call. There's no cost. We make a simple phone call, and we negotiated that they need to get there because of how busy we are within 20 to 30 minutes. And then, an angel shows up. The angel shows up, provides triage, does another series of questions and answer, and then they take the individual to a whole host of services, detox and wrap units that have been set up through a whole host of other entities to provide recovery. So, we're really excited about it. And to date, we've had... And we started off really soft, like a new kitchen. And we've had three or four people come in, and then we've had 70 that'll go through a different gate, just straight to the wrap units and to the detox. So, I think that it's a really healthy approach. And that's about the gist of it.
So, any questions?
I swore I wouldn't ask the question this morning, but what other agencies do you work with?
Yeah. So, first and foremost, this was initiated out of the Governor's Office for Faith, Family and Youth. The other ones that we work with are Teros. The Rescue Mission is related and connected to this. They've provided a tremendous amount of the backend work on this.
At the Phoenix Rescue Mission?
Yes. And then, I think the goal globally, as this expands, there are law enforcement agencies lined up all around the state wanting to do this. Maryville was chosen, and the Phoenix Police Department and our city was chosen for specific reasons. And I think the goal is globally to eventually get a big health provider involved in this, a big one, so that some of these smaller mom-and-pops providers in the community and the whole society can take that mindset. So, I think that's the goal. But those are the three, the three biggest, and the county attorney. Obviously, we are... Have tremendous support from Bill Montgomery. He'll tell you that we're a treatment-first state as it relates to drug addiction. So, we obviously had to have a relationship with them because if the subject does come in with drugs, we're going to impound them to cover our obligations, and we're going to impound them for destruction.
If they do have some type of criminal history, do you go through drug court?
So, that's a great question. As it relates to the criminal history, first and foremost, we want to make sure they're not wanted, that they don't have felony or misdemeanor warrants because that negates their ability to partake in the process. If they're on probation and parole, we have to make sure we have communication. There's another partner. And make sure that they're on board. They have been briefed and been involved in this from the beginning. So... But when they walk in with that, whether it's small paraphernalia or small amounts, we are not tripping them to drug courts. At the end of the day, what this is, is this will be impounded for destruction if you meet the criteria, and we really hope you find a way to get yourself healthy.
I attended one of the drug court sessions and was so impressed on their treatment process. It was pretty amazing what they're doing.
Yeah. Drug courts have been very beneficial, especially in the shelter area.
Thank you.
Can you help me understand why someone might choose a police precinct over going to a more traditional treatment center?
Yeah. And I think that's at the heart of what we're trying to accomplish from a law enforcement perspective. And there is a trust issue. I look at it as an opportunity to build trust and legitimacy that we are involved in this. But you're absolutely right. And around the country, this has been initiated first and foremost by law enforcement agencies because they have been on the forefront of dealing with the overdose epidemics in their communities. And I think through PRI has been instrumental in leading this initiative. I think that's the reason law enforcement agencies, because we have to be on board because they're a lot of times in possession of illegal drugs. But that's why we have that other gate, Councilwoman, so they can access that other gate and still have the services. Because there is a trust issue of, hey, I'm going to walk into the Maryville precinct with drugs and paraphernalia and not get arrested and get services, correct? So, we'll overcome that, though, through time.
On the federal level, we had, I think, what I would consider some good news out of Congress with the 21st Century Cures Act, which did have some support for the opioid epidemic. Do we see anything that might be helpful to us in Phoenix or...
I'm not... I'd have to spend a little more time with that.
Maybe that's the wrong question.
Yeah, no. But I will tell you, it's something we must embrace and embrace now as how we handle this opioid epidemic. It's huge. It impacts all of us.
Excellent. So, there's... If we had found more money, you could help spend it.
That would be up to my chief, but I'm sure she... I'm sure she would be open-minded about that.
She says, "Show me the money."
Excellent. Thank you.
Maybe not.
That's good discipline. He didn't just automatically say yes.
I just want to thank you. I know that we have many block watch meetings, neighborhood meetings. We have our community response officers out there always trying to find creative ways to help people. And one of the things that we've been hearing out there is, my parents have a problem. They're addicted to drugs. My son, my daughter, and we need help. We need resources. And this is basically those tools and those resources that our residents have been asking for. And I believe that going through the precincts and because of those officers that are out there in the community, that trust, that bond with those individuals are out there. So, it's just going to enhance it. So, once again, thank you for all the men and women that are out there that are meeting and working together from the serial killer to preventing abuse of drugs. So, thank you once again.
You're welcome.
And with that, we're on item number five. Are we doing the budget?
It is.
Good morning. I'm Jill Salai with the Phoenix Police Department. And today, I'm going to give you an overview of our budget through the end of October. Right now, our budget is over $600 million, and we've spent over $200 million, which brings us about 34% of our budget. We should be at about 33%, but due to minimum staffing, we purchased about 60% of our replacement vehicles for the year, and about 75% of our ammo budget has been spent already for the year. So, that's kind of pushed us over a little bit through the fiscal year. The differences between October of this year compared to last year, last month, we had three pay periods in September. And so, for last fiscal year, in October, we had three pay periods. So, that's kind of why we have the difference between September and October. Our top 10 expenditures are continuing to be personal service-type items. The differences for overtime is due to minimum staffing. The sworn clothing allowance, the big variance there is the restored concessions for uniforms. And the other items are like equipment management charges. Those are due to our aging fleet. And then, finally, our revenues. We have grants, court awards, false alarms, our special events, vehicle impound, pawn shop, and our IGAs and task force. The variance for the grants, this year, we have been able to get reimbursement for the 2015 hiring grant. And the difference for special events, we have to have schools sign contracts each year for the SRO program. And as we get those signed, we're able to request reimbursement for the services we provide. So, we have had a few more schools sign their grants sooner than they have in the past. And then, the difference for vehicle impound is due to the auction, the auction sales and the cost of scrap metal going down. And one of the main positive things for our grants this year, in the last few months, we've received over $6 million in grants in like three months. So, we're doing very well in the grants. Is there any questions? All right. Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Ken Lake. I'm actually presenting for the fire department, and I'll kind of go through this just as Jill did. So, at three... At this point of the year, we're at 33% of the year. We've spent 31% of the budget. So, we're trending just slightly below at $100,936,000. But looking at the four-month actuals or monthly expenditures, again, we're trending just slightly below what we were last year, but pretty much where we predicted we would be in the four-month. Looking at the top 10 expenditures, much like the police department, it's largely its personal services-related. There is probably one thing that is of interest to note, and I think it has to do with our staffing levels. They've come up. So, in the constant staffing line item, we're actually seeing a decrease in expenses. So, it's making a positive effect there, having more firefighters in the system. Other than that, there's pluses and minuses as we go all the way down. Salaries are a little bit below. Pensions are a little higher. Equipment management charges are higher. And the rest is pretty much relevant to what we'd expect in each of those line items. Revenues collected, we're just slightly below last year in the ambulance transportation. However, when looking at the grand scheme of things, on a yearly average, we expect to be the same or higher than we were last year. We're seeing an increase in collection ability there. Dispatch fees and maintenance fees for the fire department are 100% cost collection. So, we expect those to be exactly what they were, what the expenses were for last year. And that's all we have. You have questions?
Trying to think through the timing of court decisions and different action on pension. Remind us why salaries would be down and pension up?
That's a good question. And I don't have an answer right now, but I could certainly look into that and get back with you on that for sure.
I suspect there's been...
A lot of things in... Obviously, we're 90... Just about 90% of the budget is personal services-related. So, there's a lot of things that are juxtaposed, and when you really dig down and look at it.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Subcommittee. Can you hear me okay? Oh, no. How about now? Is it on? Yeah? Good morning? Okay, better. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Subcommittee. I'm Patricia Lucero, and I will be presenting the budget on behalf of the municipal court. Year-to-date, our spending has been $8,762,000, which is about 31% of our year-to-date budget. And so, we are slightly under where we are our budget target percentage of last... Target budget percentage. So, we're doing well. Our monthly expenditures, we are very similar to same time last year, and we're just slightly under on our monthly expenditures. Similar to previous months, our personnel-related costs make up our top 10 expenditures, and those are roughly about the same, just a little bit under. And our revenues collected, we are much lower revenues collected in this fiscal year than we were same time last year. So... And I believe that has to do with a little bit of the trend of citations, both state and nationwide filings down. So, that has to do with that revenues collected amount. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for my colleagues or any of the people?
I do. Or I just want to point out something. What I am seeing is that salaries, as Councilwoman Diego has mentioned, salaries are lower, but pension is up. So, could someone explain, for the public purpose, as to what's going on regarding pension? Anybody?
I'll take a stab at that, Councilwoman, faster. Pensions overall in public safety are up, and I don't have a strong answer other than the difference between what's put in the system and what the contributions from the city are certainly up. And it's probably a better question for Jeff Barton, but he's not here. But in reactionary to that, obviously, the city's very well aware of that as that increases as we continue to deal with it. Over the years, it's just continually went up. So, I don't know. Jill, you have a...
I don't have an answer right now.
Okay. If we could have this, I would like it as a future action item because this is what is, I believe, affecting some of our budgets and our hiring and really for the public to understand what's... What is happening as we are making shifts in public safety areas. So, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Councilwoman Pastore, generically, it is true that we are facing a higher obligation, a larger percentage of revenue from the city is having to go for the state pension. I just can't confirm if in the numbers he's showing, that's why it is. So, I'm hesitant to say that's why their report looks like it looks. But we are, to your point, having to pay a higher percentage for our pension obligation.
So, maybe as Councilmember Pastore suggests, we can have it as an informational item next time so we can get an update on the new pension law at the state level and also how it affects our public safety employees. Any other questions? Well, I just really want to thank you all for being good stewards and seeing that some of our revenues are down, but then the expenses are also down. So, what you're doing is you're balancing your budget by cutting down some of the expenses. So, I just really want to thank you for being those good stewards of our tax dollars and making sure that the money's spent wisely. Thank you. And we have future agenda items?
And it looks like in January, we have a cell phone ordinance. Would you give us the one-sentence update on what the cell phone ordinance addresses? Will you let me know later?
I will let you know later. I'm not sure.
I think it might be talking while driving on a cell phone, maybe, or... No?
I'm not sure.
Okay. Who requested that?
I don't know. Could we move up the Cruising on Central Car Show since those shows are coming up and there is an incident that happened that I would like to know about? January, please.
Any other future agenda items? With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.